I'd like to call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have a special permit hearing, 36 Rose Ave. We have an application in your packet. The plot plan, I believe, is here too. They are pre-existing non-conforming. Looking to utilize 61C3. Any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a one-family or two-family structure which will increase the existing non-conformity by further encroaching on required yard requirements or further increasing the maximum building coverage or building height as specified in the table of dimension requirements may be authorized by special permit from the planning board upon a finding that such alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change shall not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. That was. Figured we, that's the one we're using. Do you guys want to present or just let us discuss it? Okay. All right. I'll go, I'll start with you, Dave. What do you, did you?
Well, I took a look at the site. There's another house, 24, I believe, that's before yours, that is very similar. You're going to come out towards the road. This one extends the full width of the lot. You won't need a lawnmower when you get done, that's all. But other than that, I, I had, I saw nothing that was, stood out to me with a red flag.
Boy, the, the house, existing house is right on the property line, isn't it? What you have. Yeah. Yeah. And everyone knows where Rose Ave is. Bradley, you know where that is? Peter? Peter, any comments on this?
No. No comments.
Peg?
No, I have no comment.
The provision basically indicates that any alteration, reconstruction, extension, existing non-conforming.
We're going to speak up, Congress, so they can hear you.
There's probably no issue with the non-conforming than what is there today. So that, that seems like that is acceptable. The only other issue here is the increasing the maximum building coverage according to the table, people about both regulations. Basically, right now, this property is 8,450 square feet. The existing lot coverage right now is currently 19.6%. 20% in the area zone. If you put the garage on, it's going to increase it to 23.6%. So it's actually increasing over the so. It's not like it's a, it's just a non-conforming as to lot coverage hasn't exceeded the 20% and now with the garage, it does exceed it.
Did you look at 24? Lot 24?
Where I next go to the right?
It's two houses before, ahead and back towards Reservoir Road?
No, I told the neighbor there a little bit.
Yeah. Well, there's, it's a very similar situation other than they have. They go edge to edge of property line with garage.
Yeah.
I think about the coverage would be about the same. So we already got one that exists.
No, I agree. I guess the just question is, I'm in the special process and the findings that we will make. Granted, that not only the non-conforming in the setback, but we can adjust for the lot coverage as well because it, it does exceed 20% in the area zone. I guess that's my question. Under the special permit requirements, we would have the ability to do.
I think so. Some don't. I have heard, I have heard pushback sometimes. It's how you, how you read, you know, it's, it's. Yeah. Some, some people believe that it's just the existing non-conformity that we can work on. But I read it as it can be any non-conformity. Non-conformity is a non-conformity, is how I've always looked.
Sure, sure. Other to the right. Not sure. There's a, to the right is here. But they didn't have any attention to it. We shouldn't either. Just raising a point that that is an increase in excess of the area required.
I mean, these, it's tight up there anyway.
Oh, yes, yeah, no doubt.
Can you have any comments on this?
No. Yes.
Yeah, I drove the neighborhood as well. And I don't think it changes with me the character of the neighborhood. I mean, if it were maybe a different neighborhood, I don't want to say it like that, but if possible, well, if I don't think it changes the character.
I agree.
Seems like they're going to do something to increase the property, make it better. And I'm in favor of that.
Anybody in the public have any comments on this? So with this.
Ask, did we get any comments in writing or none? Okay.
Now we'll need the series of motions.
And you're looking to me. I didn't bring my book, so I'm going. Oh, Mr. Chairman, you, you're suggesting, I think, that when you said motions.
We need site plan first.
Oh, okay.
And actually, do we, even with our new, new ones, do we have to waive requirement or we just accept it as?
Accept it as efficient, yeah. All right. Then when we get to the special permit, you want?
Got to do the findings. Yeah, I'll get the findings for you.
I'm not sure we really need those, but if you want that, I will do it. All right, let's begin and we'll discuss later the, the ending of this long recitation. I'll move, Mr. Chairman, that the site plan submitted for this special permit by Design Group, Inc. dated June 12th, 2023. Be found to be sufficient for minor site plan review, accepted for review.
Or a second?
I'll second.
Which one?
Dave.
Hey, Dave, any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Dave?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Dan?
Aye.
You can, it's, it's a format, it's, as long as we have enough members, we really don't need, no offense, but we don't need your vote yet. But usually, sometimes like there'll be an issue coming up where I'll recuse out.
Okay.
So you can step in then. And so we have a full five-person board. Okay? Okay. Site plan is?
Chairman, I move that the board find that the
Did you find that the findings?
Proposed project is an alteration to the existing structure and that it is not an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure. No, that's not what I mean. Section shall not be more, is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. Will I restate it?
Please.
My motion is that the application which proposes a construction on an existing building, residential building, will not be more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure of the neighborhood.
And then we'll do findings?
You want to vote?
Yeah, we'll vote on that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote on that. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay.
We have to go through each individual finding now?
I believe so because it's a special permit.
Just give me a minute, I'll find it.
Yeah, me too. Looking.
I, right? You want me to recite the?
You want to do them?
Yeah, I can just recite it. The mandatory findings, number one, the structure and/or use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with the general intent and purpose. We agree?
So what we customarily do, Conrad, is you would make the motion to make that finding and then make a brief explanation as to how that finding is supported by the facts of the case.
Make the motion to suggest?
Aye, to find.
Find?
Yeah.
The structure and/or use is in compliance with all provisions, the requirements of this chapter, and in harmony with the general intent and purpose.
And the reasoning being that it is a minor modification consistent with the neighborhood? Something like that. I'll second it.
Want to do roll call or probably should, huh? Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad? Buck Donovan, aye. Moving on to number two.
Make a motion that the structure and/or use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare of those locations.
On the grounds that it's adding to the value of the building and not creating any nuisance or problem in the neighborhood, something like that? I'll second it.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Number three.
We just like these things. You want me to do this, Conrad? You're learning how to do it. I, I like this.
Yeah, exactly. Then we got two, two that.
We can get two that can do this. It's better, yeah.
Okay. I make the motion that the structure and/or use will not be detrimental adjacent uses or the established or future character of the neighborhood. It is very similar to other, similar properties in the, in the neighborhood. It's not inconsistent with these adjustments on the other locations.
A second now.
Hearing a motion, a second. Any further discussion? None. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Number four.
Make a motion that in this application, there will be not, there will not be any undue traffic congestion or undue impairment to pedestrian safety. Is it a pedestrian or traffic issue in this particular application? Thanks. Going back.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Number five. And this is, there's only five. We're done.
Taking a stew.
Buck, your end or use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety, and general welfare. Again, there's no change in the utility structure in this. It's pretty much dimensional, no impact of water, drains, and sewer. And for that reasons.
Second.
Any further? None. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that the special permit be granted in accordance with the plot plan dated June 12th, 2023.
As prepared by, as per Design Group.
Right.
And all fees have been paid.
Okay. You want me to restate it?
No, it's okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Dave seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Peter?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Conrad?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Okay. Greg's, congratulations, sir. So how this goes, how many days?
Twenty.
Twenty days. Someone can appeal. You, you begin under your own risk within that. There'll be a letter and a filing from Beth about the approval. But there's a 20-day appeal period. So if somebody does appeal it within that 20 days, you know, and you've already started construction, that could be tough. So just start at your own risk. But seeing all the neighbors came out, I don't. No, building inspector for, for the building permit. He, he, once we, now that we've done this, he can, he can approve a building permit. Okay?
You still have to meet the building code though, so he's going to want to inspect.
Right. Yep, you're approved now. So is this Matt?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, Matt can go to work now. Okay, our next, next on the agenda is public comment. First. Yep. Up to the podium, please. State your name, address.
My name's Alexandra Lloyd.
Excuse me, can I interrupt for just a second? I'm not sure that you're picked, you're getting picked up. Is there a microphone on?
There's this.
Okay, good.
Oh, thank you. My name's Alexandra Lloyd. I live at 26 East Center Street. And I have questions about the Eagle Mill project. Of course, this has been an ongoing project for years. And like many, we've been sort of asleep about it. Not even I always even happening. And so there was an article in the about it, which woke me up and made me, gee, there's a lot of questions about this. I haven't, apparently, I spoke with Chris Burton and he said, well, this, they're going to have a meeting for this. So I, I need to, I've got to play catch-up.
Yeah. So, so you want 10 years of, of progress in, in five minutes?
A lot of people are going to want to know what's going on, of course.
We've.
Because we haven't been at the meetings, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's getting, the reality of it. And so Chris suggested I come here. And bring it up. And I was just told there's a meeting, two meetings next week. What are they? Well, I hear Monday, Tuesday. Would that be a more appropriate place to talk about it or just have a question or anything?
I mean, we could, we, we, there's been a couple different variations of the, the plan through the years. Okay? And correct me, folks, if I'm wrong here. I believe the latest one is like Peter was saying earlier, a two-phase plan where they're going to do certain buildings. Some will be, they were hoping for mixed use. They're still trying to go with that. So there'll be a, the, I believe, the machine shop, they're hoping to have a commercial space in there.
So there will be businesses as well?
That's what they're hoping for. We'll see. We'll see.
Only if it's all built out to phase three.
Yeah, yeah.
Only beginning on phase one now.
Yeah, phase one is right now. So in total, there's, there's, I think it was close with all the phases, 120 units.
That's what I remember too.
Around 120 units. Part of them are workforce housing, part of them market rate. And I don't recall, Peg, do you recall the percentage? Eighty, twenty.
Eighty what?
Eighty percent.
Affordable.
Affordable, 20% market rate. And their spaces, they have to keep that, that ratio. They can't just build all the market rate and say, oh, we're done, sorry. They can't do that. They have to do the affordable and the market rate.
But not 50/50.
Eighty, twenty is, is the which is.
State housing?
No, there is a difference. There's, no, it is not. It is not. It's workforce housing.
Are there traffic?
There's, there's been a, there's been a full traffic study done on the, on the property. Boy, there was a complicated one when they were proposing a okay. At one point, they were proposing a hotel across the street, which that plan is now gone. So, okay, so there was an extensive, with a crosswalk, I think the enhanced crosswalk still remains, right? I'm not sure, but there, there's crosswalks, there's a traffic studies have been done. And like when the traffic engineers come to our town and we think we have, which we're going to discuss a little later, some more. We don't have a big tri- traffic issue in their eyes. You know, we'll have four or five cars at a stop sign. We have traffic going through, yes. But normally, you know, three or four, five cars at a stop sign is not a traffic issue, according to real engineers. To us, yeah, it's, it is, you know? Come down Main Street on, on this past Saturday was something else, so.
There's definitely concern that so many people coming in once, but then there's no jobs here.
There's not? Berkshire Starell's growing, Boyd converting's growing. There's pretty much every small manufacturing is looking for jobs up and down Main Street. In Lenox right now, there's a restaurant that's not open because they cannot get staffing. Well, it's under the affordable, Berkshire Housing, Berkshire, right? Berkshire County, Berkshire Housing. They'll be running it. And what it is, you take the median income of your town and then it's, I believe there's a subsidy prorated structure in there. Okay?
So you haven't gotten any favors?
We don't deal with that. We deal with zoning and economic and development. We, I believe our police forces, yeah, we're coming back to, to a full force. Yeah. They were, they were down a few at one point, but I believe they're coming back.
Beth Mead over here is our assistant for this committee, and she has access to our files. And I know that she, if you go visit Beth, she can provide you with at least copies of the plans when, in the form they were last approved. So you can see for yourself what was submitted in terms of what's going to be where, what's going to happen in which phase.
I mean, the first plan I saw of it, I think, it's got to be all of 10 years ago, 10 to 12 years ago.
How can we be excited when we had demo day, we took down one house?
One house and that's it.
And they're taking the other ones down by hand.
No, they're going to come, going to come.
They're doing, you know who's doing it? Sparks, owns the Bell Mills.
Oh, yeah.
They're taking the windows out of all the other ones.
Yeah. Okay, are you all set, ma'am? Any other questions?
Tomorrow, Monday.
Yeah, we sort of know the care of that.
Well, we aren't sure what's going to be. We're rewriting the town master plan, which is a 100-plus-page document that describes conditions in the town and challenges and opportunities in the town. And we have only really begun, despite having been at work for many months, we've only begun to have graphs of sections of that plan. One of the sections that we will be discussing next Monday night is housing. So you might be very interested in that meeting. I mean, it'll be right here at 7 o'clock next Monday night.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Sean.
So I'm here to talk. Check that out every single day because my former house is there. But at any rate, they are working. Taking out of there. Take with Jeff, three. And then the last three houses will be in the second. So, so far of the Puma house because it was the Corbett's house that came down, then the Pumas house. And then it's going to be the Calumbari house. And Tondo, those houses will come down. It's a slow process, but they're working on both contractors. They're working on both the back side where there's going to be and they're working on the demolition as well. They're talking a couple it's done. So that's all I
Dan Blaisdell?
Hi, Dan.
Our alternate.
For our alternate.
Yep.
I didn't know if I missed a meeting. I don't think I've ever missed a meeting, but I don't remember.
Just joined us. He just got appointed by the select board.
Congratulations.
It's, you know, I don't know if it's the grinding the sausage or watching paint dry sometimes. Thanks, Kathy. Just before we get into some of our discussions, everyone got the updates on the sign permits they submitted to us in our packet, just so we're aware of. We don't approve these anymore, but we like to be aware of them. Dunkin' Donuts, Sandry, and Big Y Foods.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm glad to see these reports and I think the form is just fine. And I think we made a good decision to give up the review of these matters and
Agreed.
They seem to be doing a very competent job.
Yep, agreed.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah, we might have missed it. I think we goofed, to tell you the truth.
Oh.
In there.
But didn't, didn't he come, promise to come back and report in full?
Yeah.
I might have missed it out.
Yeah, he was going to look into our permit, our original permit. I think they, the one that is a wall sign that it's a symbol, so I don't know if that one, you know, the Starbucks.
In the site plan approval, we got some like the signs were on the exhibit during the site plan approval. So that's fine, that's what they were. However, you still had to apply for a sign permit for each individual sign that was being, going to be proposed. And I think at the time, any sign permit was supposed to go back, back then, planning for enforcement before we did it.
Yes.
Yeah, let's, let's look back into those again. Beth, can we make a note? Yes. I know. Leave it alone.
Did we get a report, Beth?
Okay.
Well, maybe he could just write us a letter. I mean, the question is, is Starbucks in compliance with our sign bylaw? And if it is, then he can just tell us that.
And our approved signs, our endorsed signs that we endorsed, if they're.
Yeah, I suppose there are two, there are two questions. One is, is it in compliance with the bylaw? And the second one is, did we goof?
Or was a sign permit actually granted?
Did we grant a sign permit that we should not have? Yeah. One or more of the three, yeah.
Like the issue.
I think that, I think that, I think that has been resolved because they're turning it off.
Okay.
So now it's, it's a matter of are they compliant with our bylaw or, and or?
Right.
Yes, we, yeah. Yeah. And we'll, we'll throw that on the agenda next time. Hey. Ready for this one? Downtown traffic and development?
I'll lead on this if you allow me, Mr. Chairman.
Conrad did a pretty.
Yeah, I'll mention that. So the history. Yeah, I'll mention that. So the history on this is that in one of my reports, I think in relation to the progress on the master plan, I talked about how we were discussing a lot of different variables about town facilities. And that we had spent a particular amount of time talking about traffic and, and roadways. And that we recognize that there are some unusual features in Lee, which some people consider charming, some people consider obsolete and annoying. And I'm sure there's a wide range of opinions in between, but those things include having big, heavy Route 20 trucks, semis going up and down Main Street, along with all the other Route 20 traffic that, you know, not only makes noise, but makes business for the restaurants and other businesses on Main Street. But also that we have an unusual situation with diagonal parking in front of the east side of Main Street, which has been discussed many times before and which apparently is, from what I'm told, disfavored by highway engineers and the state engineering people. And then in particular, possibly even more volatile is the question of what happens down on the corner by the old car hardware and the funeral home, the Kelly Funeral Home. And should there be a roundabout there to replace the current situation in which the people coming south or eastbound on Route 20, south down Main Street, have the right of way and a left turn, which is done nowhere else in the world where people drive on the right side of the road, except for here in Stockbridge, as far as.
England.
Yeah. And so we mentioned, somebody mentioned, I guess it was me, that maybe one possibility now that the car hardware has abandoned that building is to put in a rotary there. They don't, roundabout, they call it nowadays. And, and Conrad was good enough with his skills that nobody else has here to be able to put that out at scale and show that it could be done, right, Conrad? In, in the, within the limitations imposed by the cor- the corner lot on the northwest, the funeral home, the town park on the northeast, Park 51 Restaurant on the southeast, and I guess Bank Property on the southwest. So within the limits imposed by those boundaries, he was able to draw a roundabout. And it meets standards. Conrad, do you want to talk about what your design was?
Yeah. Done this before, let's. Did it. State standards on it, but you have it. Just have trucks. Okay, not cannon trucks, just regular 53-foot long. W V. Time truck. It's got to be a go, inch of, inch of. Paid around it. Stay within, within the single lane. And if it's having, having trouble with it, it has to be able to light up and then be able to negotiate the turn.
They have like a half curb for that, right? Minute circle sort of.
It kind of lights up. So basically, they have certain standards. As trucks, they got them for different speeds, they got them for different. So I think when I did it, a single lane roundabout is what I showed you on that, on that sketch. And basically it based on the traffic count that they're now, like on Main Street right now, it's it's 11,166 A A P T. That's a traffic count on Main Street. And as you're entering, enter the park area, the traffic count was at 22 counts. So speed is coming down Main Street and the speed's coming from the other directions. For that speed, of capacity, you can get away with a single lane roundabout. They usually have four spokes. Okay? That was have three, because you didn't need the, you didn't need the fourth one, the car hardware. Get in there and you, within the right of way confines of Main Street, Park Street and West Park. And I got it to fit in, so I didn't touch the park, didn't. The bank, there's a slight taking on the scaled. And this thing is, they like to stay between 130 and 150 feet, I think it was, diameter. I did it 135, so it does meet.
Small, it's a smallish size.
It's a smaller one, but it does meet for that size, that size truck configuration. So, I mean, it does work. The state might get a hold of this and they might, they might want to push it a little bit more into the car hardware area. Maybe widen a little bit more and try to minimize takings even for the maybe instead of being a straight roadway, they might make it more oblong, perhaps. I don't know. You know, it's up to them to figure out, but I just want to see if it would fit, probably would work around. And, I mean, you could push also in, inside the lot. But then you also make a, almost a straight through, you go from Stata, or Park Street into West Park Street. You don't want to have that straight. You want to have it to come in.
If people have.
I will patient around that.
Yeah.
So. Like suggestion, it just, it just shows it can be done. And you do have to acquire the car hardware property in order to accomplish, accomplish this.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would say what, I really appreciate Conrad doing this work to show that it's possible, but it isn't by any means necessarily going to happen. It's very, very early discussion stages as far as the master plan committee goes. I, I'm glad to discuss it here because the little discussion we had apparently created some waves elsewhere in town.
Yes.
And so I'm using this as a sort of a forum to discuss it further and applying, I hope this time with the open meetings law. And, and it generates some discussion from townspeople for the master plan committee and for this committee. I checked on the law for relocating roads and this planning board does have a legal role in, if this is going to go forward, plan to do that would be submitted here and this board would make a a report, a report on whether it liked it or not, or whether it needed modifications. So we're a long way from having any formal action on it, but I very much appreciate the chance to air the issue in public.
This would have to be a state-generated program. They right of ways, I think David mentioned one time, is, is issued with the state and the control, like with the diagonal parking in, on Main Street, that the state's not going to contribute anything to that, that street while we still have diagonal parking.
Yeah.
On this, they're not going to, immediately go for one to 1.2 million bucks to build something like this.
Right.
So it's.
Well, and.
No, that's all right.
Go ahead, Peg.
Three, was it last year, they, there was a hearing about the roundabout. In town of Lee. There was.
Who did it?
And then Police, Police Department, Craig DeSantis. And they said that it would take.
You ever see it, Peg, or Kathy? No.
No, it, it occurred because I read it and I went to it just to hear what they had to say because I live here. And they said it would not take place for probably five years. And they were going to put in a a roundabout, but I don't know what you call it. Maybe like they had in the South. Something where you drive over, not quite as dramatic as some other roundabouts in the area. And they were out there measuring, I would say, for a good long time. And so I don't know, Peter, you might want to ask the state. Say, it was the state people that were measuring and surveying the property, as they have so many times. And so you might want to, I mean, if you're truly interested or the master plan may be interested, they might want to know what their view is, definitely as you said.
Peg, were they looking into taking part of the car hardware property?
They were very, very vague on different things. And some people were asking, okay, when you come from West Park Street, are you making it a single lane, a double lane? Single lane would be, and they said, yes, a single lane. So that was something, but they wasn't definite. Now, maybe it'll happen. And they gave us the idea of five years, five years. So I'm, I'm just sharing that because I went to the meeting.
The other thing I did here too is as the roundabout goes around, like you have the park right, you have your house right there.
Right.
And now you can come down Main Street Southbound and make the left turn and go into the park. Now, I don't know if you noticed, but I did it.
But could they do that?
I put a lane, I put another lane right here. We could make that left, left turn into the park. So that was still made available.
Right, because the people come to work here all the time in park, you know, park here, the town hall.
One thing I didn't do here is address crosswalks, pedestrian interaction is going to work here because that's another for that as well.
Kind of adjust some of the crosswalks. Specifically, because if you ever watch how people cross the street in the town of Lee, I mean, they don't even use, well, whatever. I don't want to be negative, but.
It was definitely for sure that you cannot sign the current town or state right of ways. That's, that can't happen. Have to be the state standard for a single lane.
Okay.
So, so it's still a long way off. I, I didn't want to say anything, Peg, about what the selectmen are doing or not doing because they don't know anything officially about what they're interested in. I think unofficially, I think they are interested, but I don't want to say anything.
No, that's fine.
Commit them to a position that I don't really know what it is. But anyway, so I think all I would ask, you know, people to take from this discussion is that this is an idea that's sort of afoot and it's a long way off. If it ever happens, maybe it'll never happen. But let's hear from people what they think about it.
Good idea.
It's got to be acceptable, acceptable, it's got to be.
And it, you know, and the, the car hardware being empty is an opportunity that may not be there in five years or even a year.
Still have a value though, that would be an expense to try to do this.
Oh, sure. You'd have to condemn the property, sure. And that would be state funds though, right? Yeah.
Yeah, on the tip.
So it would probably, even if we decided tomorrow that Lee wanted to do this, it would take probably three years to get it on the schedule. Yeah.
Oh, it's definitely down the road.
I'm.
Conversation.
Are there? There's the, it still doesn't help out the Route 20 being our main street.
Yeah, and maybe I need to say a little bit.
Thoughts on that?
A little more about that.
Talking on that or?
People who've lived in town longer than I have, I've only lived here 12 years, as some of you know, but some of the members of the master plan committee have lived here all their lives, or Kathy has, others have lived a good portion of their adult lives. And they've been around for discussions of more mass pike exits, possibly one over interconnecting with Route 7 over near Stockbridge. And one possibly further up the hill. But you've got to get the traffic northbound somehow. And if you do it further back to the east, there aren't good roads. You'd have to do a lot more work on the, on the secondary roads.
Way back to Route 8.
And I guess there's been discussion off and on about a Stockbridge exit that people are kind of discouraged about, that it just never seemed to happen.
Stockbridge will fight that one till.
Yeah, yeah.
Last one.
It may be different now that you don't have to have toll collectors at every exit. The economics are different. I don't know if the politics are different.
Oh, the structure's different. You don't have to have the big giant clover leaves anywhere.
Right, right. And, and also it's not clear to me that Lee has a single position on having this traffic on Main Street. I mean, it has its pluses, it has its minuses. Right? We have a lot of restaurants here that I know people from other parts of Massachusetts and New England, you know, know where Salmon Run is. They tell me, oh, yeah, I go there when I'm on my way through, you know? And they know about it because it's on Route 20. And if we rerouted Route 20, then there'd be a lot of economic impact for downtown. It could be good. I mean, Lennox is doing just fine, it seems, despite the highway bypassing it. They have a kind of a rustic old downtown. Even if it were possible here, I'm not sure it would be desirable. We, there would be impacts on store owners and, and, you know.
I think the heavy trucks are our main concern.
But you can't, but how do you get the trucks off and not the cars? I mean, how do you make it possible for the trucks to bypass downtown?
The turnpike exits.
Yeah. And if you have a turnpike exit over there that's proximate to Tanglewood on Route 7, would they, would they, would all the Tanglewood traffic go over there and then people stop using our restaurants and our shops? I just don't know. I, I haven't done any studies on it. I don't know what the town's position would be about it. I know that there would probably be people on both sides, would be my guess.
Where would we go with this? Do we?
Well.
Economic development?
The, the master plan committee is hoping to give this board a draft master plan with recommendations on a whole variety of issues, including transportation. And, you know, the recommendations aren't necessarily going to be definitive, but a lot of them, we, all we may be able to get to is we should study X, you know, or we should seek a grant for Y. That may be all that the master plan committee can come up with, but it is coming back here. We're revoked by this, this body and we're the ones that adopt the master plan under, under state law. So we could take a position on it. If we wanted to end the diagonal parking, say, or if we wanted to, you know, advocate for another mass pike exit over in, at Route 7, that would be a decision we could, we could take and it would be binding on the town to the extent that there's an official position.
Even like David was saying, the lane width on Main Street, just so narrow to start with. Yes, there's diagonal parking. If you took the diagonal parking out, that widens out the lane width for trucks, however.
There'll be less parking on Main Street. Yeah.
Effort on that way. That's probably that.
And, and I don't know, is it going to make the level difference worse? I mean, I guess the sidewalk is up some places two feet above pavement level. I guess that that stays.
It's going to still be the same. The only difference is you take out a a nine by 18 spot that's diagonal and you're putting a, a nine by 22-foot parallel.
You can't, your passenger door is going to bang into that wall, right?
So it's, it widens out the lane width, but it's just about half the parking numbers.
Right, right.
That's, that's the dilemma. Because that's, Dave, it's always been the dilemma, right?
Lennox had the same questions you were asking about downtown. Is our downtown going to survive when they put the bypass in? They've done quite well.
And that was, that was in the 50s, right?
Yeah, late 50s or early 60s when that went up through. And they said the same thing. You're going to take all the traffic out of the downtown. Is our downtown going to die? Oh, yeah, right. Yeah.
Poor me even.
I'm old enough to remember this. I, I.
Lot of people complaining about is the noise of the trucks, the noise. Sometimes, does Williamstown have something when you go into it where they can't have brake brakes or something?
Yep. They do.
And there's a sanction for it.
And does that quiet the noise, do you think, a little? Or I don't know, some people, to me, they don't, they're, they're more upset with the noise sometimes.
If our road was more smooth, I, when I, what I hear
Yeah.
is, is a lot of it just the banging and rattling.
There is a lot of banging and rattling.
Not as much the engine brake.
Well.
You hear that on the turnpike a lot more.
But even when, I can't think of his name now, was doing the thing right here in the park, Vern Tower. He could not believe the noise of the trucks. And he kept saying to people, is there anything you feel about it? And some of us said, we've tried for years and nothing is really, you know.
I don't think there's a very good state law on, on vehicle noise.
There probably isn't.
I, I asked a policeman one time, I asked the Lee policeman one time if there was any law about motorcycles, which drive me bananas. You know, I sit in my living room and I have to stop talking to my wife until the motorcycle is a block away as he's driving by the front of my house. And it's so loud. And he said, no, there's. And, uh, he said, no, there's no law. There's no law in it.
Wow, that's just a.
And I think the trucks, you know, the trucks have more reason than motorcycles. I mean, they're muffled. They try to muffle them, I guess. Maybe a little bit, maybe not as much as they ought to.
They go all electric and takes a little.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Getting there. No.
The post people.
Oh, Kingston EV, I hear is going. I'm collecting parts on it now, so.
Well, anyway.
Do, where do we go with this?
I don't think you need any action. Um, I just, I, I think.
About we.
Public comment that will follow this discussion will be interesting, and I hope Master, Master Plan Committee gets a little bit more feedback. You know, members get more feedback from the people they know in town as a result of being on the air tonight.
We have, uh, development, too. Any, I mean, everybody's always talking about Price Chopper building. As far as I knew, um, benchmark, but what is it? Is it benchmark?
Yes, it is.
They still have an option on it, so. No, they don't? They're gone?
We just had a meeting, or a session we've done last week.
Gone? Okay, good. So it's open.
No chatter, no activity.
No activity, okay.
We talked to their lawyers.
We, I mean, we could, this board could take some action and try and promote something. We could try to adopt a, have you guys ever talked about an official map? You don't know what an official map is? An official map is where a town, in anticipation of subdivisions usually, a town or a city will lay out roadways where it's expected that roads will be built. They're not there yet, but the idea is that if you, if you have a roadway on a map that's officially adopted, somebody wants to come and plunk a house down on that, you can turn them down and say, no zoning prohibits that subdivision method to place a house on a officially mapped roadway. And, uh, so, I mean, we could do something back there in the way of zoning by official map or special district zoning or something that encourages developers to produce something. I liked the plan that those guys had, that Benchmark had. And, uh, I thought, you know, there were pedestrian ways and assembly points with little mini parks, and, um, I thought it was pretty cool. And, um, we could, we could try to do something as a board, if you want to, to try to encourage another developer to come in and sort of fill in the details of a broad plan like that.
What about my non-soil litigation? Xavier litigation, that's, I'm losing as well.
It's still going on? It's been years. They, is there any prospect of?
Flood shoot the river when they get done, like North Adams, then build on top of the flood shoot. Sure.
Yeah, I know, but I, but you invoke it and then you have a trial and then there's a, a decision. That's the thing that we haven't had, is a decision. Yeah. Well, we're waiting for a decision from some court to deal with the adverse.
Where do we find out on that? Who do we contact? Yeah.
Yeah.
So Golub is the party against Xavier now? Xavier is suing Golub? Yeah, so Xavier is the plaintiff and Golub is the defendant? Is it? It's a trying to establish adverse possession.
Be the owner.
The claimant would be the plaintiff, no? Unless, unless Golub is trying to do with.
An ejection.
Parking spots. I don't, I mean, it could be either way.
Maybe he's made the claim. Well, there's a lease on it.
Who's we? Oh, I see. Oh, okay, I see.
Like, so.
Who?
Oh, no.
No. And they all do.
But Price Chopper still has a lease. All of property. Perhaps Price Chopper is still paying rent.
Price Chopper is Golub. No?
Or is it in partnership with Tops?
Oh.
That's a whole other thing.
Price Chopper was the Golub family corporation.
Golub family owned Price Chopper.
Yeah. It's not, it's not true anymore?
Right, right.
They all, I guess they partnered with Tops out of, out of Western, Western New York somewhere.
So the.
I thought Fiona was still Golub.
Golub Properties of Massachusetts Incorporated.
Yeah.
And with us connected to the address, so.
Um, is it fair to ask Beth to look, to call and?
Just wondering how, what she thought.
Call who?
That is your task, my dear.
You call who? Look at you. I'm so scared. Yeah.
Well, go, what I would do is call Golub and say, who is your attorney representing you in this case in Lee, in an adverse possession case in Lee? And then call the lawyer and say, where, what stage is the, is the case? Is it close to judgment? If you want, if you want me to come in and show you how to do it, I'll do it. But you can do it. I think you can do it.
Tell them you're interested.
All those, yeah. All the ideas that everybody had for that property is wide open now. Whoever wants to do it, let's go out there and do it.
It's on the contract, 1.3 million.
Yeah. It was.
What was the contract? To do what? Oh.
It's on the contract.
And it's just a property.
We have, the town has assessed that less than that, actually. 1.1, 1 point, 1 million, 178, oh, 1, 1.2.
Is there any thought that Railroad Street ought to continue down to West Park? It's another one of those transportation issues.
So you're going to have Golub donate to the town?
Oh, I didn't hear you. Golub, what?
You're going to have Golub donate the land?
No, 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 you'd have to take it. You'd have, if you wanted a road, you'd have to take, take the land.
Rather see something, some development going in than a road.
Yeah.
It's a technical entity right now, you want to, if you can.
There'd be a road and then a road ring in five years?
Yeah.
Oh, we're. You just wait till tomorrow, it's going to be something else. Beth, you ready for this? Well, well, give it two days, once everybody watches the film, and then they're going to go nuts, so.
Well.
Hey, all right. Um, moving on, more discussion. Bike Path, who has any update on this?
Peter again, yeah. Um, so the master plan committee heard that, uh, from John Tool, that the Bike Path section from the Big Y to West Park Street was scheduled for construction in fiscal '25, which begins next July. And so we were about a year out from seeing, you know, probably two years out from seeing Bike Path and that section completed. Um, I found out later that that's not true. Mr. Tool was unin, was misinformed, or he was, his information was old, and that the, what is it, the BIC committee, the TIP, TIP committee had moved it to 2028. And, um, I went to the selectmen and talked to them about it, and, um, they weren't sure what had happened or how. And, um, Selectman Bailey mentioned that he's on the committee and didn't know anything about this, um, but that he was going to pursue it further and then we would see what we would see. And I haven't heard a word since, uh, from him.
Let's see how to ride my bike there.
Yeah.
I, I suspect that there was a motion made at a meeting that maybe Lee wasn't present, or I don't know. But, uh, my understanding is the protocol in these groups is that, these TIP groups, is that projects get moved from one year to another by an official motion of which a record is made. And I have not yet, um, heard how it's resolved. There's a fellow named Cleat Cuss, K U S, at Regional Planning, who is the staffer for this TIP committee, or if the chair possibly, I don't know, but he's the guy you talk to. And he's been talking, he's got a meeting scheduled with Chris Britton, so, um, Chris Britton will be the one to tell us, I guess, what happened, if, if anybody tells us. But it's very disappointing to know that we've been bumped, and, uh, nobody seems to know why. It's, yeah, it's, it's to be funded entirely or almost entirely by state funds. And the state funds are allocated through this TIP process, which is like a, the way I understand it, it's like a countywide appropriations committee for transportation. And, uh, and they just, they bumped it, and nobody noticed, and nobody told John Tool, and he thought it was coming up next year, and it's not. And, uh.
Is there right of ways, are the right of ways taken?
No, um, one of the unclear aspects of it is whether Lee has done everything that needs to be done. And John thought, John's engineer told me, John told me that his engineer told him that, um, Lee has done everything that's needed. But apparently that's not entirely clear in the view of Mr. Cuss. Um, and so this is, I guess, the main issue to be resolved between Chris Britton and Mr. Cuss. The last I heard, what's that? Last I heard, um, all of the riverfront owners who were to be affected, all but one had agreed to consent to the construction of the Bike Path for either zero or very minimal compensation. Uh, one owner has not agreed, and, um, that's an obstacle that needs to be resolved. Either the Bike Path has to circumnavigate that property counterclockwise, or clockwise, depending on which way you're biking. Or it has to be a taking, apparently. And, uh, different people have different opinions about whether, which of those two is better.
Both of them or out of town?
I, I'd rather not say.
Seth?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our zoning bylaw of short-term rentals. At this point, I'm going to myself out as chair. Um, Vice Chair Peter will take over, and I'm going to go over and sit with Kathy. Everyone, please note this on television. Sorry, one of you, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, on this, um, short-term rental, for those who haven't followed it, we've been working on for many months a bylaw proposal on short-term rentals. It's taken some provisions from nearby towns, Otis, Stockbridge. It's a kind of a middle, I see it as a kind of a middle-of-the-road proposal. It doesn't prohibit short-term rentals, but it does impose some burdens on them. The burden would be to register with the town and to meet some minimal requirements about safety and, uh, and service, such as to have a property manager who can respond to complaints. So what we have in front of us tonight is a very minor modification, and I guess the red isn't showing up very well, but the red reflects the changes from the prior draft. And, uh.
These red lines?
Yeah, this reflects, I think, two, uh, two sets of changes, some from Gordon and some from me. And I, I believe I've described these to you before. Would you like me to go through them in detail again tonight? It would only take probably 10 minutes to do that, yeah?
It's just the red lines, pretty much, right?
Just everything is in the red line, yeah. So if you, if you have reviewed the red line in advance, then you can ask me questions. Or I could go through it if anybody asks. No? No? Okay. Seth?
E3 looks good.
Yeah, um. They're largely clarifying on B3 and B4. Why don't I just go through them quickly, then? So that's all, that's all that's on page one. On page two, um, changes are indeed that prohibited STR properties. And still doesn't look right. Oh, nevertheless, yeah, the, the red is, the red is not showing. There's a, in D1, the word nevertheless is underlined. You have to look for the underlines in order to make it into a sentence. So it would read, nevertheless, a corporation may operate an STR if its principal asset is a single residential property in Lee. So what I've done here is I've turned a double negative into an, into a positive. But it should say the same thing as before, it's just stated more clearly. And I think that's all that's on page two.
One quickly, top of the page, it says tenants, number two, tenancy will or month-to-month leases, or should we add, or long-term rentals? You're, you're saying that the, uh, tempted combinations. Um, it's clear in number one.
You know, I would like to do that, but I've taken this from the state law definition. And so I don't know whether it would be creating a problem if we vary from the state law definition. Um, I'll do it either way, Conrad, whatever you think, yeah?
I just want, I guess. Tenancy will a month-a-month, the next. Should have a longer.
Why don't we just add it? It's, I don't know that it's a problem, so why don't we add it? So, so add what? Or longer term, month-to-month, or month-to-month or longer leases? Or long-term leases or long-term rent? What is a long-term rental? Is that a, is that a month-to-month rental that can be canceled on a month's notice? Or is it a lease that's a fixed term?
Tenancy will or, that's the same thing, pretty much.
Tenancy is it will or you can stay there paying me rent every week or every month until I tell you you can't?
Usually 30 days notice.
If it's, yeah, if it's, if month, if rent is paid monthly, then at least 30 days. I don't know if rent is paid more often, but, uh, but that's often.
Because that's where the state's definition is going. You don't put a long-term rental because and that wouldn't be an STR anymore. So maybe that's why the state, that, that.
I don't think, you know, somebody has a year-long lease or a five-year lease, I don't think anybody's going to say that's a short-term rental. So everybody else is okay on page two? Dan, do you have any question?
I, just a, uh, quick question. So D1 here, uh, you know, and I see this all the time, but if someone purchases a property here in Lee and sets up an LLC for the sake of having a short-term rental, how, how, how do you know or how do we know that, uh, that's their primary residence or that they are primary resident of Lee? Even though we can go on the state website and find out creation ownership, but, uh, what's to say that one person won't have 10 LLCs in different names and their primary residences here in, here in Lee, but?
Yeah. So, um, there's nothing to stop somebody from trying that. But if they do it, they might get caught. And if there was a complaint charged, you know, if somebody filed a complaint with the building commissioner slash zoning enforcement officer, that the persons that I, you know, I'm renting an S, I'm renting a short-term rental from an LLC corporation, but the owner's not here. The corporation's not anywhere around. He's in Florida or he's in New York. That would be a violation of the bylaw, and he would be subject to being cited as an enforcement action. Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question? Yeah, I mean, we had a previous discussion, which maybe we need to reopen, about whether it even allow any corporations to have short-term rentals. And our first position was, and the position in many places is, you can't have a corporate owner if you're gonna do short-term rentals, because the idea is you want, ideally you want, you know, a person who's an owner nearby and able to fix things and have a relationship with the short-term renter. Which is very difficult to do when you're renting from a corporation. But then it was pointed out that there are some people in town who have LLCs for this purpose, that they've incorporated just to run an STR property. So we wrote this to try and allow them to do that within some limits.
Just the one.
Just the one, yeah. Where the, where the primary residence of the majority stockholder lives there. You don't look convinced.
So potentially they could have two. They could have their primary residence, which they rent out. For a few weeks to maybe some folks that wanna go to Tanglewood, but they also have another property that they bought in an LLC. So now that, now they can do a short-term rental on the LLC and then have their primary, so now they have two.
Well, we haven't got to.
Right?
We haven't got to this part yet, but there's a registration requirement.
Okay.
So that would be two STRs on the property and that would be, require a registration, two registrations. And in the registration process, I suppose we would stop that from happening. Because if you're not, if you're renting out your primary residence, then you're not residing on the property where the corporation STR is located. So we'd have to block the, block one of the registrations and tell them, you know, can't, can't do both. You can rent your house or you can rent the guest house, but you can't do STRs on both and can't register both. Still don't look convinced.
They get caught, they get cited. Is there a fine? Is there?
Yeah, there's, it's a, it's a zoning violation and the, the way zoning is enforced is, is a fine of $300 a day, as long as the violation continues. And then there's further enforcement provisions that you haven't read yet that are further down in the document.
Okay. I actually read this report out here, so.
Did?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So then you know that there's a enforcement section at the end, okay?
Thanks.
All right, moving on. That's page two. Don't see, oh, and page three, I changed F, the, the, the section heading to operation of short-term rentals. It's just an editorial change. And in paragraph six, I used lowercase instead of uppercase for Board of Health and Fire Department.
Ask on, on stage. Each STR property shall comply with all standards and regulations of the Board of Health. STRs are subject to inspection by the Board of Health, Fire Department, and Town officials. Subject to inspection, is that a, is there a frequency to this, is it an? Initially, when you first get to registration, they don't need inspection after that?
It's up to the, it's up to those departments as to, up to those departments as to what they wanna do. It's only telling the landowner that if you register this as an STR, they might come knocking.
Might be subject.
Not a promise that they'll come knocking, but they, if they do, you've gotta let them in.
We don't have to sell a, a frequency at all, that's.
I, I don't know what they would do. I doubt they would do very much unless the place is, you know, a problem, reportedly a problem. Renting a place in Pennsylvania, I'd like to turn into somebody this summer. All right, so much for page three. Page four. The change in G. D. Changes the word units to rooms or areas. That seems to be the only thing I see on page four.
On one up. Is property manager's name, 24-hour telephone number? Number?
I'm saying telephone number, because I don't think your telephone number in the afternoon is different than your telephone number in the morning. What do you mean by that, by a 24-hour, you mean?
I'm just thinking if there was an issue. I'm the manager. On 24-hour basis.
Right, so we're requiring that the registration include the phone number for that person. And we're also requiring elsewhere that the property manager. Go up, it's after some period of time. Let me see if I can find it.
Two hours later?
This is on page three, paragraph F4. Each STR property shall have a property manager residing within this state, who shall maintain a 20- to 24-hour telephone number and shall respond within two hours to any problem or complaint reported by a tenant.
You got it, you got it.
All that we're doing on page four is just saying, if the tenant can't get the number elsewhere, he can get it from the registration. The phone number's gonna be on that form. Hey, that's page four. And page five, there's a change to L, the third paragraph shown. A statement and diagram showing the number and location of off-street parking spaces. It's just really a rephrasing, but it adds the word of diagram, which I think Gordon suggested, maybe you did, Conrad, I don't know. But it's, the idea is, if somebody is coming in to do a short-term rental on a property that has, say, two buildings on it, that the tenant knows where he's supposed to park. And then in enforcement. In H2, we have, we've said that, we would say that he's failed to provide, failed to update all required contact information. So it's not just the initial registration, but if the property manager changes or if ownership changes or something changes, there's a continuing, continuing obligation to update the information. So if there are any, are there any further questions about this?
There's been a, a fine. They could be applying the bylaw.
The, yeah, this is gonna be in the zoning bylaw. So the zone, normal zoning enforcement mechanisms apply. Usually that means that there's a notice of violation issued by the building commissioner. And there's a cease and desist date usually, and if they don't comply with that, then the potential fine of $300. There's also another way to enforce it, which I don't think they use, but it involves going to superior, to civil, a civil action in district court. But I don't think they use that.
They're having trouble getting. They know, go to, they go to. Boy, they can see all the places. Lee, wherever. So they know. Technical standard, you're not registering.
So are you asking me if there's a legal remedy or are you asking me what's the mechanism for administratively fining the viola?
I guess the, the, and, you know, what's the penalty for not registering?
So the penalty for not registering is in the first sentence of H. It's a violation of the zoning bylaw to not register and not operate an STR that's not registered. Okay? And that penalty is $300 a day. And in whatever else is says in H, and which is that if you. You have, well, you can revoke a registration, in which case, that's not your hypothetical. This is a person who's never even bothered to register, yeah. I mean, practically speaking, you know, I, I can't speak for what the zoning administrator's gonna do. If I were zoning administrator, I would be very liberal in the beginning with notifying people, it looks like you're doing STRs, we have an STR bylaw, here's a copy, please file a registration. And then a month later, if they haven't done it, send them another letter and say, we wrote to you a month ago, why aren't you writing, why aren't you registering? Or have you stopped doing your STR? You know, that kind of thing, gradually increasing pressure.
The mechanism won't be, it's up to, you go to. See, go to Verbo, Airbnb and see who these people are and.
Yeah. It's up to them to decide how much enforcement activity they wanna do, you know, how much trouble they wanna look up.
Or we could just have that do it.
You know, I think if this passes, I think we should probably talk periodically to the zoning enforcement officer, see how much is going on and how closely it's being watched. I don't wanna predict that they're gonna do too much or too little or just the right amount of, I, I don't know what even the right amount is, but it sounds like, based on the Stockbridge experience, like it'll be a moderately difficult sale to get people to comply with this, so. Just not sure. I don't know why people wouldn't, but, I mean, I think the word gets around pretty fast if the town adopts a, a bylaw like this. But there'll be people who won't know, probably. People who, you know, just for 20 years have rented their, you know, house out when they went to Florida for, you know, California, two weeks in the summer during Tanglewood, and they just didn't know about it. And I don't think those people should have to pay a penalty, but I think that if we notice that they're doing that, I think they should come in and register.
If you are in Airbnb.
You're out there, you're out there publicly in the world as doing this business and anybody can look you up and anybody can file a complaint if you're not registered, including somebody you rented to. There's, there's somebody, you know, if, especially if some tenant, renter is unhappy with their experience, this would be the first thing they'll do.
Okay, so if you're violating any of the, of this bylaw. Just complain, have a big pardon, they put the tent up, you have to fire it up, it's hard down the street. By the ZEO. I have to three hundred bucks a day.
They lose it, they lose their registration?
Registration, is it?
The selectmen. That's an H.
Selectment will be the.
If it's a revocation, it's a selectmen's job.
And they have a. Can I type it corrected or it's just?
Well, read H. In addition to the penalties otherwise provided for zoning violations, the select board, after notice and hearing, may revoke an STR landlord's registration for up to 12 months if it finds that the STR landlord has done any of three things.
Oh, on Paris, and that, that's where they would lose their registration.
Yeah.
If you get three to the prime.
Hey, so I think the next step, if you wanna proceed further with this, is to go to public hearing. And Beth, do we have a suggested date for public hearing?
We just vote here.
First part of September. Do we know anything about the town meeting? No, still nothing, okay. September 11th, okay? You wanna make a motion? Peg, why don't you make a motion to submit this to?
All right, I'll make.
Public hearing.
That we do a public hearing on short-term rentals on September 11th, it will start at 6:00. Start at 6:00.
6:10?
6:10. In the courtroom here in Lee.
Thank you, Peg. Motion, motion's been made for a public hearing on September 11th at 6:10 PM. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Anybody in the public wish to make a comment? I think he can if he's a member of the public, but I don't know, maybe you should. It's still unclear. You're worse, you're worse off than if you were not a member of the board.
You were right.
Yeah. Okay. Nothing from the public. Are you ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, come on back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. On your.
Welcome.
Five pages would have seemed like.
I know.
We talked about it for a long time.
I know, I agree.
It's more complicated than some things.
It always is.
It's a regu, whole regulatory system that, if you gave it to the EPA, they'd come back at 100 pages, you know?
Okay. Got it. And we're turning it right back to you, Peter, master plan.
Okay, wow, I get to talk a lot tonight.
You do. You know?
Okay, so Master Plan Committee is meeting next week, a week from, from now. And we will be beginning a sort of double-session period where we'll be meeting twice a month. And we are, we've ended our familiarization phase. And we are beginning a debate and produce text and recommendations phase. And I'm not sure how that's gonna go, because we haven't done very much of it. I'm hopeful that between the scheduling help that we're getting from the Regional Planning Commission staff, which is very helpful, and the texts that we're getting from them, that we'll be able to reach a final product by Christmas. I anticipate that the, the contract with the Regional Planning Commission runs out at the end of the calendar year. But we are entitled to a little bit of sort of routine support from somebody up there every, a little bit every year. And so I may ask them to give that a little bit to help finish up a public hearing event, which is likely to be, I would say, in January. I'd like to take the, the draft plan that we produce and have another event like we did last February at high school and subject it to public criticism and review before we would take a final vote and send it to, to this board. Now, if you want, tell me and we can omit that step and let you guys do the public hearing. You could say, here's the, you know, here's what they gave us, what does the public think about it? And you could conduct a public hearing, it might work better, I don't know. But I don't wanna, I would personally prefer to, as chairman of the Master Plan Committee, to submit something that we've given some ventilation to, to the public. And, you know, if we're gonna recommend some, you know, revision to the highway network that's gonna be, you know, negatively received, we probably ought to hear that before we take our final vote. That's, that's what my current plan is. So I would expect, and if that's the way it works, that we'll do the final hearing and the master plan, master plan will do it. And that'll get you a draft master plan sometime in February, probably. And, and then it'll be up to this board to do whatever process we decide we wanna have to finally adopt it. I'm trying to keep it kinda short. Some of the places that have master plans are, you know, they go to, I looked at one this weekend, it's 250 pages for a small city and, you know, it's just, just takes, I don't know, I don't know who reads a 250-page master plan. Pretty clear that very few people in that city read it, because I, I talked to a couple of them I know and they, they have no idea what's in it. So I'm trying to get something that is where the, you know, the description of the situation is well-written, not too loaded with data. well-written, not too loaded with data, but still based on good data. And, uh, so those are the challenges. And, um, I'm asking you to appoint still one more person, um, to the committee. I can't think of his last name, Patrick. That's Patrick's last name. Just met with him this morning. Patrick Rooney. Patrick Rooney is a, uh, person who's just moved to town recently, within the last couple of years. He lives on East Lee part of town. I don't know what the street is. He moved here because his wife got a job at Canyon Ranch. And he has a part-time business doing, uh, vehicle rest, classic vehicle restorations. It's one of the many things he's done. I met with him today. He's a very interesting, capable guy. And, uh, I would ask you to appoint him to, as a new member of the master plan committee. Move that, I move that you appoint him, so.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Peg seconds. Uh, any discussion about him? Okay, go around the room. Peter?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peg? Conrad? Give, give us one.
Hi.
Mark Donovan, aye. Everybody agrees.
Thank you.
New member.
Peter, any questions?
Public meeting again before you finalize it, bring it to this board. Would be helpful just, you don't, so you don't get caught blindsided by something.
That's what I'm saying, I think I'm going to do. That's, that's my preferred way of doing it.
I, I agree.
Okay, all right. And then, and then this board will have something that's at least been, you know, openly discussed in the town. And, you know, the last time we did this, we had 80 people show up. So if we get anything like that, a lot of people will know about it and we'll have, we'll hear the reactions and-
Well, last time, I think most of the board showed up anyhow, which was nice.
That was very nice, yeah.
But I think that you, you'll see that again and, uh, we'll all know with, you know, it's, it would, there's nothing going to come out at the last minute and-
Well, you know, this, these things work best if you get a chance to sort of try them on several times, you know? And like in the legislature, they have a tradition of three readings. When the bill is introduced, that's the first reading, and then it goes to committee and it comes out and it's read second time at least, usually by, you know, not just by title, but it's in the calendar. And then they, the, and then a day later it gets the third reading. So everybody had a chance to see it a couple of times and think it overnight and that sort of thing, so. I'm extending it a little bit and we'll be doing, you know, before you even, this board even sees the thing, as I plan it now, there will have been a public hearing on something very like what we submit to you. I hope it's very like, I mean, I hope you don't have to throw out half the draft after the public hearing, but it's always a possibility. Hey, that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on, Community Preservation, Preservation Act.
Okay, the only thing I know about that is I got an email from Stuart Senya. Not sure if we're going to get the full amount this year. It'll be money, I mean, we still have money. What possibly we had thought we were going to get. The budget still being in the state house, and they had to go to the senate as well, so. He just said we might not get as much. And the applications are out there, uh, people are starting to write them. I even know of a couple, but, you know, goes, that's all we can see on it. We'll go before town meeting, so everybody has a chance to.
Any, all of the grants that you make will be approved by the town meeting vote, is that right?
Well, yes.
What will, what?
I think they're all-
What will go before the town meeting?
Where, how much money they want to put in those four different categories. Remember one?
Oh. Oh, I see.
Yeah, but we may not get the amount that we thought we would. We'll still get, there's still quite a bit there, but, um, budgets are being tweaked, I guess, every place or, what they're doing is they're putting more money in education and taking it up from other places and the state.
But isn't it our money that you have? Isn't it town, town surplus, town surcharge? Oh, oh.
So.
And they may not?
Well, they'll match some of it. I just don't know if it's going to be quite the exact thing that we sort of thought in the beginning, that's all.
Can I ask you to, maybe I should do this offline, Peg, but we've heard a lot of talk about how hard it's going to be to get housing built, especially workforce housing built in Lee, and this is one of the major financial resources available for housing construction.
Yes.
And do we have, you're expecting applications from like the Lee Housing Authority for housing? Or is it more like the regional Berkshire?
I think, um, what Greg Barrington did, not us, but they have a housing trust.
Yeah.
Yes, now, I haven't heard we have that yet, that's all I can say.
Okay.
I think it's difficult.
So if you, do you know if you have any applications for housing?
I don't know of any just yet, but-
Oh, okay.
As I should be because it's harder, the, the timing is really off for me. But, not that I know of yet. I hope we do, but-
You know how much money we have sort of banked up?
We have, I thought we had 700,000 or at least, yeah, there's quite a bit of money there.
So if somebody wanted to do a hous, a little housing, one or two unit thing, they could probably-
Usually that would go through a particular, like, construct. Construct usually does a great deal of housing in different, um, towns in Berkshire County and they may, they, you'd have to have an organization sponsor.
Yeah.
Right.
But I mean, there's, this is, they're the flies, we got the honey, right? I mean?
Yes, yes, yeah. So I don't know, um, I know Construct has done a lot in various towns and it's turned out pretty well, but-
But you don't, you, you aren't aware of anybody out the file or?
Not just yet.
Okay, thank you.
Um, who's, who's the chair on that committee?
Tom Ladston. He lives right here in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're going to have this on our agenda, maybe we should have a report from him.
Well, that's a good idea. That's a great idea.
If it's going to be here.
Sure.
He's the chair of the-
Uh, Community Preservation.
Oh, yeah.
How about, how about we do that, a report from him once a month? Would that be okay?
Well, I gotta ask him. I mean, he's worked, yeah, I can ask.
Could you look into that?
Sure, I'd be happy.
I mean, so we don't have it every, every meeting?
Yeah.
Let's do like the first meeting of the month?
About a quarter.
Quarter, a quarter would be better.
It doesn't change that much month to month, yeah. It's an annual cycle, it's an annual grant cycle.
You're right.
All right.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Nope, it's not there then.
Okay, it has to do with the barn?
Nope.
Okay.
Not on the agenda, it's not here.
Didn't she ask for something to be included on next meeting's agenda?
Sure. Could you put that on?
What?
Back the barn. Remember their last meeting when we, they, they, when I did tour?
I asked for that. Interesting, on 102. Just curious what status of that was, or is that going to be on the agenda?
Yeah, that would, should need, need to be on the agenda. Yep.
What, what do you mean by the whole cannabis thing?
Just, uh, oh, the smell from-
I see, okay.
And I, I think that, well.
Okay.
Okay.
And the last thing, sorry.
That's it.
Last thing is the, um, question of the 102 zoning issues. I agree, talking about maybe reducing the 75 down to, say, 35 or something.
Actually, let's, let's put split zone on for next meeting. Re, so we'll revisit that.
And the frontage issue, the front setback issue.
Yeah.
Just I'm sure, just somewhere we, uh,
We might even have an update on. Look at that again, Air Force.
I, I never did write to council.
No?
Okay. I, I neglected to do it and I spoke to you, Mr. Chair, and I think you said, let's hold it. So.
Yeah, you mind if we hold off till we get done with these things? Yeah, we'll hold off on those.
Same issues that we kind of left out.
I think the, the question that I was going to ask him was, to what extent are we constrained from bringing it up, bringing up the split lot proposal again at town meeting now that it was defeated once? There's a provision of state law that says you can't bring the same thing up again for a couple of years. But the question is how close the thing can, could we bring up? Can we bring up something similar? And I have not sought council's advice.
Well, and you've set back issue, which is another issue.
For a little bit, get through these ones.
Yeah, just an item that we-
Okay. One more motion?
Motion two, John.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, we'll see. I'll give it a 40, well, give it a 48-hour cycle.